Can you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands us, one nation, unbound, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight's Tuesday, December 12th. It is 7:30 PM. We just came from executive session. We were discussing committee appointments. We're gonna go a little bit out of order here. I am gonna start with some special guests that we have tonight. And I'm actually gonna move down here for this. So, tonight, we are lucky enough to be officially, I guess, hiring one police officer and promoting another. So, we are gonna start, let's start with Angelie. If you wanna come up, please. We're gonna have you... You're gonna raise your hand and repeat the oath. Alright?
Alright.
So, I state your name.
I, Angelie Alexander.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, if you want to sign. Do you wanna...
Thank you.
Jason, you wanna mention the relation?
Yes, and I should mention that we're very lucky that this has become a family tradition in Rybrook. And that Angelie's father is also a police officer in the village of Rybrook. So, we're very happy.
Do you guys wanna invite your family for a picture?
Yeah, have a family picture.
Congratulations again, and very pleased to have you as part of the Rybrook staff. So, we're also promoting Detective Dan Bruno tonight. He's been, Dan, Sergeant Bruno has, well, now sergeant, soon to be. Has it, oh wait.
Go ahead, go ahead, and we'll do the resolution right after that.
Okay. Okay. Has a distinguished academic and professional background. Graduated from Sacred Heart University and a degree in criminal justice from BU, with a master's degree in criminal justice. He's been with us since 2015 and has been a very competent and reliable officer. In 2019, Sergeant Bruno was chosen as the Dare Officer for the department. And I know from my kids who have done the program and from others that everyone just loved having him as the Dare Officer, and he did a great job. In 2021, he was appointed as a youth detective. He's excelled in that role, conducting thorough and timely investigations, collaborating with other agencies and jurisdictions. And certainly, this isn't just, the youth officer isn't just for the Blimber School District. This is also the Porchester School District as well. Sergeant Bruno has won several awards for his exemplary service, including one for exceptional merit and two unit citations. He's also received numerous commendations and letters of appreciation from the public and his peers, and has earned the respect of everyone he's worked with, including this village board. Sergeant Bruno is now ready to take on the next level of responsibility, and we are confident he has the skills, knowledge, and attitude to be a successful sergeant. So, congratulations, Sergeant Bruno. I'm gonna have to come up, please. I'll go first. Alright, before we do this, actually...
You can do it from there, if you like.
Okay, I'm gonna do it from there. So, I don't know.
I'll read the resolution. I'll read it.
Okay.
Considering the appointment to the position of police sergeant, whereas the village board, serving as the Board of Police Commissioners, interviewed three candidates for the position of police sergeant for the village of Rybrook, and whereas the Board of Police Commissioners concluded that police officer Daniel Bruno possesses the necessary skills and qualifications to effectively serve as sergeant in the Rybrook Police Department, and whereas the village administrator, on behalf of the village board, offered Daniel Bruno the position of police sergeant on December 6th, to which Daniel Bruno responded positively. Now therefore be it resolved that effective December 13th, 2023, Daniel Bruno of Tarrytown, New York, is hereby promoted to the position of police sergeant in the village of Rybrook Police Department in accordance with the terms and conditions of the offer letter dated December 6th, 2023.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Other than congratulations, no.
Congratulations, well deserved.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. So, now that that's done, we can move on to this part. So, if you don't mind, I state your name.
I, Dan Bruno.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of police sergeant.
The duties of police sergeant.
Congratulations.
We need the whole family, the whole family.
Let me jump in here for one with you guys. Well, certainly, congratulations to Sergeant Bruno and Officer Alexander. We're just so proud of everything that you do for Rybrook. We're very lucky to have a tremendous police force here in Rybrook, led by Chief Greg Austin. So, I think he deserves a round of applause as well. And that concludes that. Everyone's obviously welcome to stay for the next presentation if they want. If you wanna retire to the cookies or otherwise, you're welcome to do that as well.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Bye.
Oh, yeah, if you go...
Yeah, I'll get it.
Greg will get it. Greg will get it before you have to this picture.
Yeah.
There's a kitchen.
There's a kitchen right behind here.
It'll take two seconds. I can get it.
Freda, Freda, don't go on the side, 'cause he's gonna look at over here. They're gonna do the presentation.
Alright, so, we are now gonna move on to our next item on the agenda, which is a report and presentation for the 975 Anderson Hill Road Sketch Plan. And I believe we have representatives of 975 Anderson Hill Road, which is what we've started calling it after the last meeting. We made sure of that.
975 Anderson Hill.
Yes.
So, this will be visible here up on the screens. I'm assuming it streams anyone at home. We'll be able to see it as well.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Trustees. I know Chairman of the Planning Board is here. My understanding is some of the members of the Planning Board are here. Some of the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals are here. Some of the members of the Architectural Review Board are here. David Steinmetz from the law firm of Zarin and Steinmetz here. Very pleased and excited to be representing Charles Cohn and Cohn Brothers Realty with regard to the former Doral Arrowood property. Joined by Charles, by Dave Fogel from Cohn Brothers, as well as by Diego Villarreali from JMC. We're pleased to be here tonight to begin, in essence, informally, the redevelopment of the Doral Arrowood site. Charles, in a moment, is gonna walk us and walk all of you through a detailed presentation of the concept, of his vision for this mixed-use redevelopment. And I say mixed use because, as you will see in a moment, we're proposing a wellness lodge and spa, indoor and outdoor recreational amenities, residential units, a medical building, all adequately parked, extremely attractively landscaped. And we believe this is going to be a wonderful new attribute to the community. No formal application has yet been filed by my client or our team, and the public should be well aware of that. We have met with those who are gracious enough to give us their time. We appreciate the fact that the mayor, as well as Trustee Heiser, met with us. Chris and his entire staff, as well as Chairman Goodman, have also spent some time with us. We've also met with your building inspector, with your outside planning consultant. And we did all of this at the outset, at an early stage, because we wanted to share with all of you the preliminary vision that Charles and his professional team have formulated. We wanted to get some initial feedback as we were formulating the proposal that we're now willing to share, and we look forward to beginning the process formally in earnest. We've also, as I think some of you know, we've been working collaboratively and cooperatively with our neighbors at Doral Greens. I know several of them are here, represented by counsel. We have been engaging, thank you, we have been engaging with the folks over at Doral Greens. Why? Because we wanna secure their endorsement for the project. It has been very important to Charles to be a good neighbor to Doral Greens, and we believe Doral Greens is going to be a very good neighbor and, quite frankly, a beneficiary of this project. Why? Because a significant amount of the subject site, as you probably all know, winds through the Doral Greens community. Portions of the old golf course are actually, quite obviously, owned by Cohn Brothers, and they will be meticulously designed and landscaped. In fact, we have a term sheet signed with Doral Greens, and we're now working to try to formalize some legal documents and agreements that will speak to landscaping and maintenance and how we're going to coexist together. And it's important that the board understands, we fully recognize we cannot pursue this project without some zoning text amendments in addition to site plan review and going through the formal New York State Environmental Quality Review Act or SEACR process. So, we intend to do that, hopefully quite soon. Our goal is to commence that process at the beginning of next year. Before I turn to that and before I turn it over to Charles, it's important that we all recognize, Doral Greens, not Doral Greens, Doral Arrowood has now been dormant for several years. The site is unsightly. It is unproductive. It is crying out, and quite frankly, Rybrook is crying out to restore one of its flagship hotel facilities. You're about to see something that we don't have here in Westchester County. It's something I think all of us who live and work and raise families in the county, we deserve something like what we are prepared, what Charles is prepared to bring to the community in terms of design, in terms of landscaping, in terms of the quality of amenities, in terms of a place to go and enjoy with your family, with friends, a place to entertain and have a functional ballroom where activities and events can be conducted, a place where we can have jobs, tax ratables, and something that fits into the community and onto this property. There was something there for a long time. I went there many years ago. I think one of the first times I ever played golf was with my father on that nine-hole course. It's time to bring Doral back in the fashion that Charles is prepared to do. It's time to bring back commerce and an attractive neighbor for the entire community. And I'm excited to share with you what we've now been putting together, and we look forward to coming back and working with all of you, the other boards that will clearly be involved. Mr. Chairman, we know we're gonna be spending a lot of time with you. We hope to be efficient, but a lot of good time. And I'm gonna turn it over to Charles to share his design and his vision, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Board of Trustees. Thank you, members of the Planning Council, community, and also neighbors. And I'm very excited to be here tonight. I grew up in Harrison, New York. I'm a member of a group of people that went through the public school system. And I knew Arrowood. I knew the Cascell family. They were friends of my family. It's been a long journey to get here tonight, and we're very excited to share with you something that we think will raise the bar significantly and really put this project and Rybrook at the forefront of a lot of people's thoughts and minds and providing recreation, providing ballrooms, providing venues for celebrations, weddings, bar mitzvahs and the like, and also a place for people to come and feel good about themselves and to find a way to lead lives that are more productive and also more healthy. So, wellness is a very important thing for all of us today. You know, it started, I guess, with nutrition, and it's not just spa. It's about wellness of the whole being. And so, you know, Doral Arrowood, I guess, inspiration was American Native Americans, and that was the Arrowood idea. So, at the early part of this project, what went through my mind is, how can we connect the community and this project in a way to be successful? And the idea was to take advantage of the location, which is Rybrook, but we're really at the beginning of the Adirondacks here. So, the style is, architectural style is Adirondack camp style. That's what it's known as, camp house. And you'll see some of the, I think, similarities in the imagery. The idea is to create something that's transportive. We have a pond on the property that, what we've done, and we'll show you in a moment, is to relocate the hotel structure so that the access point is on this pond. And our plan is to make it larger and to make it a real feature. And the idea is to create a transportive experience so that folks from the immediate area, from New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut, don't have to drive three or four hours to go to another state and to another city. We want them to be here. So, with that, why don't we begin? We have put together a terrific team of professionals. Our architectural team is out of Southern California, but they've worked all over the world. They've done over 400 hotels, many resorts. Of course, our friends from Armonk, JMC, is on the planning and civil side. Our landscape architect is the Edward Durrell Stone Associates Group that actually cut their teeth on the PepsiCo campus many years ago. So, and of course, our law firm, graphic design. It's, we've got really a world-class group of professionals. So, this is a slide that shows you the existing property. Maybe Diego will use the cursor to show you where Doral Greens is to the east. Doral Greens is to the east.
Oh, Doral Greens, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's over here. There we go, right. And the hotel property, the hotel property is in the shaded area.
That's right there.
And now, let's flip to the next slide, which will give you an idea of the relocation. So, you can see that it kind of has two arms and a central area that the access point is the pond.
Right there.
Right. The parking, the surface parking remains the same, and we have added parking, some underground parking that we've added. So, here's a brief synopsis of what it is. Seventy-seven acres.
Seventy-seven acres is the portion of the property that Cohn Brothers controls. That doesn't include Doral Greens itself. It's seventy-seven acres. When you look at the overall property...
Ninety acres. It's ninety acres.
Yeah, that's the ninety acres.
No, but theirs is in addition to the ninety.
Theirs is in addition. I think that's...
I think so.
Excluding with another piece.
No, I think you got that wrong. Okay, but the idea is for 220 hotel rooms. I believe that Doral Arrowood had 360 rooms, so this is smaller. And it's about 150 wellness hotel rooms. There is a conference center component of 75 rooms, and there is some wellness suites that are 40 rooms. There are, residences are split into two places. In the hotel itself, the top two floors have 40 residences. And then, there's a separate standalone building to the west that would have 70 or 75 residences. And total of 1,300-plus parking. And the wellness, there's a small wellness building with two wings comprising about 50,000 square feet. And the conference center I mentioned, and there's a host of amenities, indoor and outdoor. So, this is the fully landscaped plan of what we're planning. Is there something you wanna point out, Diego?
I think it just, this really starts to put together the site plan portion of it and starts to show you the different components of the overall development. As Charles was indicating, this is the hotel and conference center. And you can see the design and the U shape of it, and the access and the focal point being on the lake that's being created at the bottom portion of the hill there. And then, as you move south on the property itself, this is the residential building, and then, this is the office building. And Anderson Hill Road is on the bottom portion of the page here, just to orient everybody. King Street is off to the right-hand side of the page here. And again, what Charles was really talking about was the design of the project, how it took into character the land that's out there right now, the topography of the property. Everything is really geared and slopes down towards that pond. So, this development plan, when you look at it in this flat context, and you'll start to see some of the graphic images in the next couple of slides, everything's really built with that hillside as it works down that hill and goes down towards that pond. Everything is layered in the property, starting with the parking lot. This is the existing parking lot. It's remaining pretty much exactly where it is right now. There's no real changes to that, and then, everything starts to work its way down to the lake itself.
Let's go to the next slide. So, here's a shot from the pond looking to the east. And we have a structure that goes from the land onto the water, which is a lake house. You can see the elements of the Adirondack-type style. There's a rustic character to it. That's the entry on the east side, the drop-off.
Charles, wanna describe the entry that you would envision in terms of its...
I think we have, what's I think important for everyone to understand is, my experience with Arrowood, and I'm sure you'd agree with me, that when you would walk in, the ceiling was very low when you came in. I felt like, I mean, I'm not very tall, but I felt like I was gonna hit my head. So, having gone with my younger kids skiing out west years ago, you would go and stay in a lodge, and a lodge would have fireplaces, and it would have some loftiness to it. So, the idea was to create something in the center, an atrium in the center. It's a void, but the idea is to walk in and there be a sense of comfort, a sense of, I don't know, it's hard to describe, but a lodge-like feeling, that you feel that you're in a lodge. You could think of the snow and the wind and the rain, but you're in a safe place, a little bit of a cocoon. So, that's why there is an elevation in the center. It's kind of the key feature. Again, it's the A shape of the Adirondack style. This is the drop-off to the southeast, which is, the conference center has its own drop-off. As you may recall, the existing conference center is off to the northeast. The idea is to start demolition shortly. We're actually doing the interior demolition now, and then, move into the structural demolition in the next several months so that within six months, it'll be gone. This is looking out from the first floor when you walk in. Most of the property, most of the development steps down away from the entry. And it gives you an idea. You can see the lake, the lake house, the pool. There's a lawn, large lawn space for private events. There's a little swimming pool café off to the left. And this is now looking at the plan. You would enter, there's a lobby. There are two destination restaurants on either side, plus a hotel restaurant. So, there'd be three restaurants there. The conference center is off to the left. The hotel is off to the, the wellness hotel is off to the right. And there is the, there's a spa pool up on the right-hand side, and the tennis courts are to the left. And the idea is to redevelop the golf course, preserving many of the natural wonderful trees that are there, and to celebrate a nature experience, hiking trails, meditation areas, to, you know, maybe have your iPhone and learn about different trees and all of the horticultural aspects. This is a section that gives you an idea of where we start on the left side with the check-in. You can see the void where the, to the other side of the residences, right over there. The banquet spaces are below, you know, at the lower level, and there's a function lawn as well. But it gives you an idea on the lower part of the slide, give you an idea of how we sit next to our neighbor to the east, Doral Greens.
I'm just gonna chime in real quick on this slide as well. One of the things that we spoke about, again, the topography of the land and how everything works towards the lake on the right-hand side of the page here. And again, that was utilized with how the building was built into the hillside. So, what's facing Doral Greens at the front entrance of the property is at a certain elevation, and then, the backside where you walk out onto the main terrace and the front lawn, it's actually two levels below that. So, we're burying two levels into the hillside, and then, you walk out onto a lower level towards the lake. And that's why you see this function lawn down here, and then, the drop-off area that sits at this higher elevation.
Charles, most of your rooms do look out towards...
All the rooms face, none of the rooms face our neighbors to the east. Everything faces to the northwest, to the, you know, the lake and the trees.
And I think it's important just actually to point that out, going back to this slide, and this really is what shows it. It's a single-loaded corridor. You have the corridor that leads you to your rooms here, and then, all the rooms are facing the lake itself.
So, there are no bad views.
They're interior gardens?
So, this is now the other two portions of the property, which is the residential building and the medical office space. We thought that that would be a good combination with the wellness concept. And we've been looking to establish a relationship with a major hospital group, whether it's Wild Cornell or Yale New Haven. So, that's something that we think is important, that gives it a real legitimacy. This is a rendering of the backside of the residential building. Again, in the same style, everything is an organic, harmonious approach. And this is the elevation of the residences.
Same concept again here. Because of the topography and the land, we're actually burying the building into the hillside. Although, this is, excuse me, just one level is buried here. So, when you're standing at the front entrance, it's still higher, but it's only one level lower. lower at the backside.
Now, this is a rendering of the medical, the two medical wings, each one's about 25,000 feet, just two-story buildings. And that gives you the section of that. And this gives you the view from the Kingsfield, I believe?
Correct.
So, that's what Kingsfield would see. This is existing conditions of the shrubbery that's there now, trees. This is a overview of the hotel property, a bird's-eye view.
Again, from the Kingsfield direction, but again, much more elevated.
Right.
Gives you that bird's-eye.
And you can see off to the left where Doral Greens is. It's just some block buildings for the purposes of the rendering, and you can see where the residential building is to the right, parking. Now, this is the Doral Green plan that we've been working with their consultant on, and if you look at the circle in the upper right, you'll see that, you can see just the very roof area only from the Doral Green northwest corner.
And just to add to this one a little bit, what the landscape architect, again, really worked on was identifying the existing buffers that are there now, the trees that are going to be maintained, and you can see that all highlighted in green. The intention is to maintain those mature trees that exist there between the parking lot and the residents themselves. But then, they also identified areas where we can supplement landscaping, and that's that maroon or brown color that you see there. Those are supplemental areas that will be landscaped as part of the plan, again, working with the existing conditions that are out there now.
This gives you another example of what would be seen from Doral Green. That's from the back of those homes that are immediately behind the parking.
The emergency access, that's the key location here. It's right where that emergency connection is from the existing parking lot to Doral Greens.
And that emergency connection would be preserved.
Right, continued, right. This is another example of what would be seen. So, we've, we've been very mindful of making ourselves as attractive and as, as, you know, insipidious as possible.
Another view shed a little further south.
That's right. And the vision for Doral Greens, this is a detail, it's all about a rewilding of the site and a restoration of the ecosystem that once existed many, many years ago, involving regrading, removing, cleaning up, and a lot of natural flowering and shrubbery and landscaping, meadows.
This is just the elevations. Just, we thought it was important, again, we touched on this beforehand, just to give everybody some context with the elevation and grade change that occurs across the property. And you could see the parking lot, that existing parking lot, if we were to establish an elevation for that, is at about elevation 320. And by the time you go down to the lake, it's at elevation 250. There's over 70 feet of grade change between the existing parking lot and where that lake is on the bottom portion of the property. And again, it was really just to show the relationship of those grades, how the buildings are being built into the hillside, and then how we're utilizing those grades to, to help with the building construction, but then also help with screening and vegetation and everything else on the property.
Okay. So, our goal tonight was to share this vision with you, to introduce it to those of you that, who had not already seen it, both from the board trustees and the other boards. We are hoping to get enough of a nod from the board of trustees that we can indeed proceed. As I said earlier, our next step would be to file a rezoning petition along with an application for conceptual site plan review. We would submit our secret documentation, and then we would begin what we know will be a thoughtful and thorough environmental planning and engineering review with your board, the planning board, your outside consultants, and anyone else who ultimately is involved in the project. We're basically ready to go. We're anxious to get your sense and your feedback. We're happy to answer any questions. As I alluded to earlier, and I just want to make it totally clear, we expect to be continuing our discussions and finalizing our agreement with Doral Greens. They know it's not final, we know it's not, but we have a signed term sheet, and we, we can't thank them enough for the amount of time we have been working collaboratively over pretty much the last year. Before we got to this point, it's important for you all to know, we've been at this, Charles, for over a year, really. So, a lot of thought, a lot of time and energy has been put in, not only to the design, but working with our neighbors and getting ready to be here. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving us some time. Thank you, Chris, for coordinating this, and we're happy to answer your questions.
So, thank you for the presentation, and I would say that this is a, this is simply a sketch plan review. So, this is, you know, not anything that, you know, we're not voting on anything tonight, we're not, you know, there's no decisions really that have to be made. A lot of it is just to inform the public of what a, what a potential development in this site might look like. Also, for the board, the village board at this point, and, and I would say, you know, a member of a different board, if they would so choose, to give initial comment. You know, now that, now that we've seen it, we've seen what the potential is for the site, now would be a time to kind of let, let people know your initial thoughts on what you're seeing. A couple of comments from myself. I would just say, well, first of all, we're always excited to have investment in Rybrook. We believe this is a great community, and we've been certainly missing our hotels, and we are glad to see a proposal that has a hotel component to it. That is something that, that we, we do like, the idea of. I would remind of something else that was said during, when we had initial meetings, that our code does require the 10% affordable units for any residential development. So, that would still be the case. But I would open this up to the board for, for any comment.
I, I was just going to say that, now seeing it for the second time, what, what I find most intriguing is it's going to make the Village of Rybrook a destination, and I think that's fabulous for us.
I think, I think it's a wonderful project. It looks very interesting. You know, I can only say, you know, let the games begin. It's going to be a, it's going to be a juggling act with the approvals, but I'm sure, you know, I think going forward, it looks like a substantial project, to say the least. And a lot of planning involved, but I like it.
Thank you.
Nice.
It's very attractive. It reminds me of kind of woodblock pines. Is that what you were going for, to a degree?
Well, we wanted to do our own thing.
Yes, I mean, it's, it is different, but it will, it will enhance, to David's point, Rybrook and our reputation.
Anyone's ever been to Beaver Creek? That was the, when I first met Charles.
If you've ever been to Beaver Creek.
Well, not being a skier.
Okay, but Charles mentioned that to me the first time we met.
Have you been to Beaver Creek?
Yes.
You know, if I had a Beaver Creek's...
It definitely reminded me of skiing.
That's what the inspiration was.
Yes, I could totally see it, exactly. And I think it's going to be a great asset to our village. It will remind me of skiing every time I...
Yes.
So, she won't be staying there. She'll be traveling out west because she's inspired by it.
The idea is that, even if you live down the street, we'd love you to come and spend the night. And you don't have to go too far. We might even pick you up.
Oh, that's a bit better.
The whole idea is to be transportive, to feel...
What activities will you have on the pond? Will there be water skiing?
No, no, it's not big enough for that. But I think there may be some small rowboats and things like that. I think that would be fun, maybe canoe or two. Yoga.
How large is the pond?
Yeah, well, the idea is to use that lake house for yoga in the morning, and I think that it'll be great for retreats, and we'll have the largest ballroom that's divisible into six ballrooms in the county. Something that, right now, the largest ballroom is at Braeburn Country Club, which isn't really open to everyone. Just a little better food.
And we should add, we should add to everyone, for everyone in the room, too, all copies of all these documents are on our website, have been on there since last Friday. So, you know, if anybody wants to look at it closely, or zoom in, or anything, all of this is on our website.
And again, everything is still conceptual, nothing's been finalized and filed, so there may still be some tweaks.
Right.
But, but, thanks for announcing.
And we understand that, absolutely. And, you know, as alluded to before, I should let the public know that the, the property owners have been applying for demolition permits, and so that's moving forward. The building that was there was in no condition to even be rehabilitated. So, we, certainly, I know our, you know, our engineering folks, our building inspector, our police and fire are happy to see that that building is not there anymore, because it was becoming a little bit dangerous. So, we're, we're glad to see that. And with the, and then just procedural, the next step would be filing for site plan application.
Yep. The, the site plan application and the rezoning petition, which would become at the same time, and that would be introduced. The staff would look over the documents to make sure the application is complete, and when the application is in a position that it's ready to go to the board, it would start, it would come to the village board, and however long it's at the village board, and then at some point, the village board will refer at a minimum to the planning board right up front, so.
And I'm expecting...
And we have to, we also have to initiate the seeker process.
I was going to say, I'm expecting this would be a full EIS over.
I mean, yep, you should, we'll wait and see what comes in, but I would expect.
I, I do have a follow-up question, if I may. How do you envision the residential units working? Are they rentals? Are they owners? How large are they?
We haven't decided what the, whether it would be for sale or for rent, but I would say it'll be high-quality, raise the bar among the best residential opportunities for people that don't want to have a house. There are a lot of people that maybe have homes here now that want to downsize, that want to stay in the neighborhood, maybe they have family here, maybe they are snowbirds in the winter, maybe they're down south, down in Florida, wherever, and want to be back here in the summer. So, the idea is to come up with something really spectacular.
Right. I'm thinking more along the lines of not cost per se, but size of the units, and how would, if they have children, how would it affect our schools?
I, I really don't think that this is a product for families. I don't think that's the plan. The plan is for it to be for people that don't want a house, that want to be, that want hotel services and not have to worry, you know, put your key in the door and leave and come back, and, you know, the bed is made, you can have dinner in your, in your apartment. The idea, and laundry service, all of the things that I think characterize a Class A hotel and a Class A residential development.
And would those units be able to be leased out?
I don't know. I, I don't know. We, that's, you know, way down the road as to putting a plan together. That would be something we'd have to work on through the Attorney General's office. It's, it's, you know, I would hope that we would attract a type of purchaser that is not really interested in leasing it out. It's a, a Rybrook home. You know, part of the inspiration for the apartment house, our original thoughts were to develop townhomes. Original plan envisioned about 70 townhomes, and I just got a little scared of that. I thought, that's a lot of houses to build, couldn't do it all at once. And I know that there's been a very successful project in Ry that has a St. Regis flag on it, and the idea is to do something along the lines of that and bring that here.
Just following up on the school children issue, we hear you. It's, it's obviously an important question. I'm sure the school district officials are concerned, your board is concerned. It'll be part of our secret analysis. I'm convinced we will be able to provide more board and the planning board with sufficient empirical data of what's likely in terms of market attraction and who's going to end up living here. There's plenty of data on that.
Sure, I'm sure. I just wanted to think about if you've had that thought process.
We, we have.
Okay.
I don't think it's going to be young children. If anything, it would be, you know, college kids coming home to see their parents or use the, use the facilities.
All right.
Actually, I have one more question.
Yeah, please.
So, are you, you know how Doral sort of had like memberships available to the community and the public? Is that something you think you were going to have, or you haven't approached that yet either?
I, I've thought about it, but I'm concerned that we don't have gigantic fitness facilities. I think they're generous for the number of hotel rooms that we would have, and I'm, I'm cautious. The last thing I want to do is to have someone that is a hotel member, hotel guest, or a condominium owner not be able to get on a treadmill or something like that. So, I, I'm not thinking in that direction. This should be a place where you want to go and, and get a physical and be able to eat, you know, food that is spa food, but also if you want a hamburger, you can have one. So, it's something for everyone, but with a wellness vision.
All right. I would also invite, we have, we have chairs of some of our boards here. I believe we have planning, zoning, and ARB all present, and I would invite any members of those committees, if they have a question to, or a comment, to please come up. Rob?
You have to, only because of the microphone.
Yeah, because of the microphone.
Okay, I'm Rob Goodman, I'm chair of the planning board. What is the relationship between the medical facility that you're going to be developing and the residences? And how are those people that are going to be attending the medical facility, are they going to have access to the amenities in the sort of residential facility? How are you working that out?
No. Think of it as a medical, a medical office building. I don't know if it's going to have an affiliation with a hospital or not. My preference is that it does. Do they end up with...
Yeah, yeah, I may need you to speak into the microphone, sorry.
We're not sure what the affiliation will be, but the idea is to attract doctors that have practices that would be complementary to the idea of providing whatever medical services are needed to make the wellness, wellness vision successful. That, that's the connection. It's not just to have a dentist or a veterinarian, it's not for that. And so, the answer is that it'd be going to a doctor's office, no different than you would go to a doctor's office today. So, someone going to the, to have a physical, if they're not staying at the hotel, they don't live there, is not going to really have access, other than if they want to have dinner or something like that. Want to create an air of exclusivity, which will make it distinguished and a destination, as you said.
You can have a follow-up.
Excuse, excuse me. Quick, so the medical facilities for the residents and the hotel guests only, or no, it's for the public?
No, no, it has a separate road entrance from Anderson Hill.
For, so for the public?
Of course, of course.
Any doctors? Yes, okay, good.
So, it's really an office building?
Yeah.
Wellness bed.
Okay.
For doctors.
Well, you know, what we want to do is, it's not a lot of, originally, there was 100,000 square feet approved for our office, so this is 50,000 square feet?
Okay.
75,000. I'm sorry, I corrected. 75. So, this is smaller and more intimate, and again, in the same architectural style. So, it's complementary to the vision for the whole development. The idea is to make all the parts that are separately powerful synergistically powerful when they all come together. That's the idea. So, that's why we have a conference element to it, where people can, we have 75 rooms that'll be not the same room as the main wellness hotel or the spa suite. So, it'll attract, I think, different folks.
Are the 75 rooms part of the 220?
Yes.
Yes. Any other questions or comments from our other boards?
It's 145 and then 75.
It's up to the mayor. It's up to you, Representative Doral.
Yeah, please, I know that is, yeah, please.
My name is Robin Markell. I was the fourth person to move into Doral in 1991. I always had the hotel across the street from me, which I loved, and now I have this atrocity across the street from me. So, speaking for myself, and I'm sure many of the residents at Doral, I look forward to having this destination wellness community that you've talked about, showed us about. It sounds, looks very appealing. We look forward to having this in our backyard. It'll be so much better than what we have, and I'm very excited about it. I want to ask a question, I don't know to who, because we've been... I don't know to who, because we've been living like this for quite a while. What kind of timeline? I mean, what happens and how long will it take for us to have something that isn't going to be a demolished piece of something and start to see what might look beautiful in our backyard?
Yeah, and we can't answer that until a full application comes in and we see the zone, actual zoning amendments and things like that that have to still be submitted. But that'll give us a better indication, because then the process will be, the environmental review will take some time, you know, that new traffic work and a lot of other, other work to complete the environmental review. You're looking at, it's going to be an extended timeframe. It's not going to be just a few months or anything like that. We're talking about a longer term. It is a big project, but it's a substantial one that'll, you know, hopefully change the community really for, be a great improvement and addition to the community, but it's going to take some time to review it.
So we have to be patient and look forward to it.
Yes.
Thank you. How long is the application process? It's complicated, is this, should it take?
Depends on how, how much information is provided that the boards require, you know?
Everything you need.
The, I think the process that's being followed is very helpful. The sketch plan review is a great way to introduce it to the community, you know, get it out there. We're very transparent in Rybrook. We can assure the public, whenever things get submitted, we're going to create a development page that will have all the documentation, all in one spot. So we try to stay very organized with that and very transparent. So I can assure you that part of it, but other than that, you know, I think this is the right process. The more information you can get upfront and feedback, the shorter it'll make it in the long, long term, knowing where we're going.
Somebody else was raising.
Yeah, and I think with the EIS, I mean, a lot of it, you know, the speed at which things come is, you know, from my limited experience with EIS, because we haven't had a tremendous number of them, and, you know, in my 10 years on the board, 10-plus years on the board, is that, you know, a lot of it has to do with how quickly we're receiving the information, and so that our consultants can then turn that information back around, ask questions. And so there's a lot of back and forth through the whole process. And, you know, because we're, you know, obviously, anything of this size, we're going to do our due diligence, we're going to take our time on it to make sure it's done to the satisfaction of this board, so that we're doing our jobs and protecting the community, while at the same time also understanding that this is a significant development that will have far-reaching impacts on Rybrook.
We look forward to working with Sarah. We've already met with Sarah on this, and we know that she'll be diligent, so.
She's here today.
Yes. That's how diligent she is.
It is.
Other people were raising.
Yeah, this really is in a public comment set, but I'll certainly open it up to a few more, you know, if there's a few, if there's a few other questions or comments.
He's on the planning board.
Please.
I was debating whether to ask a question or not, but you know me.
Please ask it. Now's the time.
Unfortunately, we do know you, John.
John Grusen, I'm on the planning board. Very general question.
Sure.
On the first look, you have to like the project. I mean, the impression is very, but what's there for people that are not guests and that are not residents? What's there for the community? For example, I'm a golfer.
No golf.
Few times I used to go there and play golf. You taking that away from me now? What are you offering as a community member?
I'm all venues that you don't have now. If you have a daughter getting...
You mean, access to restaurants?
Access to restaurants, access to the ballrooms for events, for, you know, weddings and other celebrations that are going to other places that aren't in Rybrook anymore.
Yeah, that's not what I really had in mind. I have to pay for that. The trails, can I walk there?
This is a private development.
Okay. So there is really, in essence, not much for me as a resident of the community.
Well, I think that...
Other than taxes, the tax revenue and all of that, yes.
No, but if we're successful, it's going to raise the value of everyone's home and raise the awareness.
I know, I know, but that's not the nature of my question.
Yeah, and I would, I would ask, you know, it's really because this is the format of this, if you could kind of address the questions at me, the way that we would in a planning...
Well, I know, I'm going to have an opportunity to ask this question from that chair. But, you know, I think it's for the public in general, I think the public likes to know, is there any give back to the village, so to speak, as a result of this beautiful project? There are not many opportunities for us to develop in the village. We are all built out of community. And we don't have many amenities as a community as a whole. We rely on Portchester and somebody else's, you know, Harrison or White Plains or someplace like that. So I would like to see something in the form of a, I hate to use the word give back, but for no better expression than that.
Right.
It costs money to build these things, it costs money to...
Tonight isn't up there. Steven? All the answers aren't there yet.
Yeah, and we understand that all the answers aren't there yet fully. And during the, during the process, I know with any development like this, you know, a lot of times in our code, there's either the parkland or the payment in lieu of parkland. So, you know, obviously, we'll cross that bridge.
You hit one of my responses, but I want to respond to the question, because in fairness, if you played golf there, unless you figured out a way to sneak in there that my dad and I couldn't figure out, we had to pay to go to that private course. So it was a private course that charged money for people to enjoy, so it was a commerce-generating facility. You and I both may like golf, but we also both have to pay for golf. Secondly, in terms of give backs, this community is crying out for tax ratables, hotel tax ratables, employment, affordable housing, and stimulating your local economy. So with all due respect, and I know, I already can tell, we're going to debate this when I get to the planning board, but I will tell you, as a frontline land use practitioner, those are give backs to a local community. And that's why tonight, I, I kind of feel like I got the nods that I was hoping I'd get. No one on the board has said, Mr. Cohen, you're crazy, you're out of your mind, take your project, pack it up, and go home. In fact, so far, and we really do thank the entire community, the Rybrook community has been very welcoming of our team, of the project, and I can assure you, Mr. Mayor, you said it, there will be rec fees, there will be application fees, there will be inspection fees. He doesn't want to hear all that, but we're going to, it's all part of the process. So the community, I can assure you, Rybrook's going to do pretty well. There are a lot of, a lot of other communities in Westchester that wish they could have what's about to come. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other, please?
I can't figure it out.
Hi. My name is Phyllis Milton. I've been a resident in Doral Greens for 28 years, so I'm not as old as Robin.
Strike that for the rec.
She understands, old as far as being here. Anyway, I am on the board, and I represent my colleagues on the board, as well as 138 homeowners who are very interested in what's happening here. For the most part, we've been meeting with the Cohen team. They've been very open. We've been very open. We've told them about Doral's needs, what we'd like to see. Generally speaking, we are positive about what we saw. We think it'll be very good for the community, and we expect it to be good for us. So we have a lot of things we have to work on with them, the landscaping, the one, what we're going to see when we look out our windows and things of that nature. But they've been very cooperative, as have we, and I expect good things.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and just to one point that was brought up earlier, I would just say that, you know, as, as I mentioned before, we're not really voting on anything. This is just a sketch, a sketch plan review, so yes, you're seeing nods from us. It's not to say that, you know, everything's going to sail right through. We know that there's going to be some back and forth with the different, with the different boards.
Expect nothing less.
Including this one. And we understand that the project, you know, there's going to be tweaks, and the project's going to change along the way. But I'd, I'd say that generally speaking, I think that this board is, it's a positive reception from, from what we're seeing tonight. Am I wrong?
No, absolutely. I think our planning board and architecture review board will definitely give you a run, which is good. That's why they're there.
It's exactly right.
They're there to help us make a decision, so.
We all have our work cut out for us.
We do.
I look forward to it.
And on those boards, you have a lot of, you know, these are people volunteering their time, as are we up here. So it's a lot of dedicated residents and individuals who care a lot about the community, and with some great professional staff that really help us along the way and give us the advice that we need. So we're very much looking forward to the process.
Right. It was a great way to expedite it by having all of our colleagues here from the village.
And as Chris says, we're very transparent in everything that we do, this being one of the steps. And we certainly, you know, as we get, as Chris mentioned, as we get information, it will all be available to the public.
We will see you hopefully next month.
Good luck.
Enjoy the holidays. Thank you for the...
Happy holidays. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Not everyone.
Thank you. Good night, December 2013, or the...
Pretty cool. It's a bit like that.
Thank you. You went backwards.
So we do have some other items on the agenda, so I would ask that, do we want a two-minute recess while we... You know what? I think we'll take a...
10 minutes?
We'll take a five-minute, we'll take a five-minute recess.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. [end of transcript] I didn't know it was there. I probably think that. Hi. All right, thank you, Fred.
Yeah.
All the phones got, they're all the, just upgraded, but they're same cost, just, they replaced them.
All right, so I believe that we're back. Thank you for bearing with us. I apologize for everything that came before, so, and for taking the recess there to clear the room a little bit. We do not have to do the pledge again, but moving, moving, moving along in our agenda, resolution number, yep, resolution number two, consider a request for an extension exemption of chapter 158, section 2.1 of the village code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for the Blind Brook School District.
Whereas on April 11th, the village board of trustees approved a local law enacting seasonal gas-powered leaf blower ban from May 1st to September 30th, starting May 1st of next year. And whereas under the village code, properties with at least five acres can apply for an exemption or exemption or extension of the local law. And whereas an application has been distributed to known eligible properties in the village of Rybrook and also placed on the website. And whereas on November 17th, representatives of the Blind Brook School District submitted an application for an exemption from the requirements of the local law requiring a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers, now therefore be resolved that, in consideration of the intent of the local law, as well as consideration raised in the application from representatives of the school district, the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby either denies, approves, or approves of conditions, the request for an exemption of the village code enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for the Blind Brook School District.
Thank you, Chris. And I believe we have a representative from the school district? Please?
Hello, everyone?
Hello.
My name is Louis Rodriguez. I'm the director of facilities for the Blind Brook School District.
Louis, could you just lower the microphone a little bit so we can hear you a little better?
I am the director of facilities for the Blind Brook School District. My name is Louis Rodriguez. We are requesting an exemption of the leaf blower ban. We have, in the past, purchased several leaf, battery-powered leaf blowers, but they have not been powerful enough to do the job properly. The entrances and the outside stairs are challenges, challenged to clean when the leaves are wet and a bit heavier. Not being able to remove the leaves efficiently and quickly can create slipping hazards. We have had companies prune and cut back the trees on the property, but in the, in, hopefully to reduce the amount of leaves, but this has not worked properly. We, the way we work, our custodian drivers are, after they do their bus runs, we maintain the property. We only have a certain amount of time to clean and before the guys have to go back to driving. So we really need to be able to do it efficiently and quickly.
Out of curiosity, I'm just curious, so I just want to make sure that you're aware that this is, you know, that the ban is not in effect during the leaf season. This is just from May through the end of September. And so is, is there any use of electric equipment there or no?
We have several battery-powered pieces of equipment now.
Okay. Questions?
Are the battery-powered, powered one used in certain areas of the school?
We, we try to use them close to the buildings where we have windows so that we don't interfere with classes and things like that. But obviously, it takes longer to get the job done.
And it's, so this is the full school district, so it's both schools?
It is.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, because I'm thinking at Blind Brook, you know, Harkness is, would be us.
Yep.
Right? And then the lower fields are us.
The lower field is us, yep.
Right, so it's really just around the building of the blind, but then the Ridge Street School has a lot more property.
Fields, yeah.
Yeah, a lot more fields and property there.
Yeah, and the, the islands in between the parking lots all have trees, which make it a bit, you know, a bit harder to do.
And new ones, too.
I'm sorry?
And new ones, too.
Yes.
All right, well, I would say as a comment, you know, I had the same reaction when the Portchester School District came before us, that I was kind of surprised that they had to. But I understand after that one, why, because a lot of what happens at the schools is outside the purview of the village. And so, you know, my inclination here is to grant a one-year extension.
One year.
I don't know. I think it's always being applied for anyway, so it's...
Okay.
Let me ask a question. Are you prepared to switch over to electric leaf blowers should the technology get better?
Yeah, yeah, if the equipment works.
Why not?
Absolutely, we're willing to try it.
Yeah, because I think it's, you know, it's starting to get there. I think it will get there in the coming years.
Yeah.
Especially for the limited applications that we're talking about, which is really outside of leaf season. So, you know, when we're talking about just kind of hardscapes and, and, you know, I'm assuming it's just clippings, random debris, is that what you're doing off-season?
We do, clippings, we do the sidewalks, the auditorium walkway, stairwells up to the auditorium.
You know, what I'm always apprehensive about is that a one-year exemption is really just sort of the stalking horse for a lifetime exemption. But we never want to use anything other than that which we're using.
Right, and, and I think, you know, certainly, you know, this, to, to us, I think this, this really was a first step.
Yeah.
Other communities have gone farther than this in banning the gas-powered blowers altogether. So I think you're right. We will be looking at it with a little bit of a harder lens a year from now to see that hopefully there were some improvements made in, in some of the technology being used. No?
She should have a motion to...
Yeah, I was gonna say, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
For the, for...
To move with the one-year exemption.
To move with the one-year exemption.
To move to run, to go with a one-year extension. Second.
Questions, comments?
Nope.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you.
Just to be clear, so the extension goes to September 30th, 2024, because again, then the fall season, you could use it, but that gives you time to make another request if you choose to, to the village board prior to the following May.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye.
Thank you.
Happy holiday.
Yes.
All right, moving on to resolution number three, consider a request for an extension exemption of chapter 158, section 2.1 of the village code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for the Blind Brook Golf Club.
Whereas on April 11th, the village board of trustees approved a local law enacting a seasonal gas-powered leaf blower ban from May 1st to September 30th, effective May 1st of next year. And whereas under the village code, properties with at least five acres can apply for a full or partial extension or exemption. And whereas an application has been distributed to eligible properties or known eligible properties and also placed on the website. And whereas on October 26th, representatives of the Blind Brook Club submitted an application for an exemption of the requirements of the local law requiring a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers, now therefore be resolved that after consideration of the intent of the local law, as well as considerations raised in the application, from representatives of the Blind Brook Golf Club, the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees either approves, denies, or approves of the conditions, the request for an exemption or extension from enacting a seasonal gas-powered leaf plan, leaf blower ban at the Blind Brook Golf Club.
Thank you, Chris. And we have representatives from the Blind Brook Club.
Yeah, thank you ver- very much, everybody. And Mr. Mayor, members of the trustees, and Mr. Bradbury and Mr. Rivera, thanks, thanks so much. It's great, good to be here and have an opportunity to show off the club a little bit. I would like to, I'm here with Michael Ford. Michael's our golf course superintendent. He'll explain the use, the equipment, current equipment that we use and how we use it, why we use it. And I'd like to just give a little bit of background on the club. Hopefully, I won't bore you too much, and I'll be, be over shortly. Is it okay if I can go over there?
Do you have the mic?
Yeah, if we have a microphone that you could use potentially.
We have a portable. Craig, do you have the portable?
I was saying, do you think the camera can see the map?
Mm.
That it may be better to...
That one should be, just angle, if you could just angle it with, so the board can see it and the camera.
Yeah, so the camera can see the map.
Perfect.
There we go.
It can go in front of, it can come closer in front of the...
Well, there's multiple cameras.
The timing worked out tonight, at least you got to see...
One there.
The timing worked out, at least you're able to see the application earlier, too, or the sketch plan, right?
Yeah, that's, that is going, that is a potential neighbor of yours as well, so...
So, so I, I think there was a diagram like this in the application, so, but I'll point out just a few things that, on it that might be of interest. The Blind Brook Club's been in existence since 1915. It, it is a business and property. It's operated as, as a golf club ever since and continues to look forward to going, doing it for many, many more years. The original drawing, I wish I had brought over, I have a photograph of this entire area and a little bit down in this yard before any, any buildings were, or it was any building except the golf course. There were probably a handful of trees on it, maybe two handfuls of trees on the property, so it was basically a cleared property at the time. Just to orient you a little bit more, this is the clubhouse, Anderson Hill Road, Country Ridge Road, the Blind Brook, and of course, over closer to Michael, off there is the enclave, and then, then King Street. Just to give you some sort of idea of scale, just happen to have one, this is one foot, one foot, or pardon me, one inch equals 100 feet. So you can see right here, an inch from right about there, just about this, this line right here is 100 feet from the backyard property. And if you take, if I went forward all the way up here, it's 17 inches, so we're about 1,700 feet, nearly a third of a mile from the, our, our neighbors on Country Ridge and also about 700 feet from the enclave over there. So our, our neighbors are on this side and a little bit on the other side. Scale-wise, we're probably talking about 25 to 30 acres of fairway. And for those of you who don't play golf, this is this large area in here you'll see outlined. By the way, this happened just to be from a 2018 restoration plan that our golf course architect put together. I'm sure many of you are looking at the square greens. Usually, they're round on maps, but where, Blind Brook is unique and that it has some square greens. So I'll let Michael speak to the equipment, how we use it, when we use it. West Chester, by the way, is a highly competitive area for golf courses. And, and the, this is where, if you are starting out in a business, you want to come down here and work, because this is where it's, it's, it's the use in cutting-edge things. We have, over the years, introduced electric equipment, and I'll let Mike, Michael speak to that a little bit.
Well, thank you for your time this evening. I'm the golf course superintendent at the club and responsible for maintaining the golf course and all of the surrounding grounds within our property. In total, it's 160 acres, and of that 160 acres, we roughly maintain about 40 acres of it is what we'll call deemed fine turf. It's a very highly manicured turf that we, we, we maintain to play the, the recreational sport of golf. To Bruce's point, probably 25 to 30 of those acres is fairway, and that's why we're asking for the exemption this evening for the application, because there is no comparable electric-powered equipment that we can, you know, maintain the larger areas on our property. If you've noted in our application, we intend on purchasing several backpack blowers, all electric, for next year to use during the period from May to September on our smaller areas, our greens and tees. But for fairways, there is, there is no machine that currently electric-powered that can, can get the job done in a, in a timely fashion. I don't even know if they make them at all, to be honest with you. So over the, over the years of my time being at the club, and we've spent nearly a little over $200,000 on electric mowers, most recently in 2013, all of our greens are mowed with electric mowers, lithium ion from Toro. And then we also have one ride-on machine that is fully all-electric. So I just want to note that, that the club is, you know, well ahead of, you know, this ban as far as being sensitive to noise pollution and air pollution, and we want to continue to be good stewards of the environment and good neighbors to the properties surrounding our club. And I think that, that shows a good progress on our, on our part. But that, that's the main reason why we're asking for that exemption, is that some of our larger pieces of equipment do not have the, the resources available in, in electric yet.
Michael, would you just describe what you mean by the larger pieces of equipment?
So we have, like, some tow behind blowers behind a golf cart. We have a blower that will drive down the fairways. Like I said, it's roughly 30 acres to clean the debris off of these surfaces before we mow them. You know, typically, it's leaves and sticks and, you know, fruiting bodies from the trees, the maple samaras, the oak blossoms, any sort of small debris can cause damage to not only our mowers, but also the turf itself, just being so highly manicured. It's very sensitive to debris on it prior to mowing it. And that larger piece of equipment is used on average two to three times a week in season during that May to September.
To, to the best of your knowledge, is anybody in the process now of developing electric equipment along those lines?
I have not seen it. If it is happening in, in R and D, in a, in a company, they haven't made it very public. I know certainly the backpack blowers, the handheld backpack blowers and things of that nature on smaller pieces of equipment are readily available, but as far as larger apparatus, I have not seen it.
Mayor, can I ask you a few questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
So just for clarification, because I think I heard, I heard something, I just wanted to make sure it's accurate. So are all the lawn mowers electric at this point?
Not all of our lawn mowers, but certainly the ones that we use most frequently.
Okay.
Our greens are most sensitive and highly manicured turf. They're mowed six days a week.
Those are electric?
Those are, we have some gas, but all of the ones that we use, certainly close to the properties, the residences, we only send out electric.
Yeah, I remember you've done that for years.
Yes, we, we've done that for years, and then our, our fleet kind of has aged, and we've recently purchased these new ones in 2020.
And are you, I just want to clarify, clarify, and the greens, the tees, and the clubhouse, those are all being done with electric blowers? Or you're proposing that you're doing electric blowers?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
We're proposing that during that timeframe of May to September, to the best of our ability, we want to use as much as electric as possible for our blowers.
Okay, so you're focusing in on the greens, because some of this is, we don't want to build in, you know, any conditions and stuff. So you're looking to, so the greens, the tees, the, and around the clubhouse... So you're looking to, so the greens, the tees, and around the clubhouse, you want to use, you're proposing to use electric if you're not already?
Correct.
And so the exemption you're requesting, just to be clear, is on the fairways?
Correct. And our, just our larger tow behind blowers.
Yeah.
And you'd be comfortable that being in the resolution, that you would use the electric on the tees, the greens, and the clubhouse?
Absolutely.
I'm actually most concerned about the ones that butt in Country Ridge Drive. There are three that have butted most of the houses in.
Right. As a quick, as a quick question to that point, you know, being someone who's very familiar with golf courses, are you blowing, when you're going, when you're blowing the fairways, are you going down the center of the line, blowing to the rough? Or are you trying to blow away from the houses down there?
We try and blow away from the houses. Obviously, wind direction sometimes doesn't allow that, but to the best of our ability, we just try and blow into the rough.
But I mean, towards the, away from Country Ridge?
Away from, yes.
Right.
And we've been in...
Well, it's the fairways, it's the fairways.
Those are the ones where you're getting the most noise.
Right.
And that's what we did for somebody else.
It's tough because that's 2, 3, 4, so is that, you're probably hitting those early in the morning.
All the greens that you see along County Ridge Drive, we have been mowing with electric mowers since I started with the club in 2019.
Right. I think, you know, trustee Epstein's concern is with the, with the actual blowers that you're trailing behind. And then, you know, I don't, I don't know if you work interior to exterior, you probably don't because that's your early holes, so.
Well, no, we do work for the fairways. We work from our shop towards County Ridge Drive. So by the time we hit County Ridge Drive with blowers, it's 10, 11 o'clock in the morning. So as far as staying within the parameters of the noise ordinance?
Right.
It's well past 8 o'clock during the weekdays that we make noise over there.
Right.
Regardless of the routing of the golf course, holes 2, 3, 4, which are along that, that line, we always mow those last in our rotation for that practice.
All right.
And purpose.
Up in noise.
Right.
Not up in line.
Right.
We've had other people, that's the only one where they're near houses.
Right.
This yellow line right here is about 100 feet, 300 feet, and getting up to 500 feet or...
Yeah, it's only the three holes that I'm most concerned about, that are but the houses. Because I, I do hear it.
Of course you would have told us, planes and everything.
Yes, I understand. It's very loud and it's a very large piece of property. We have asked other people, not just yourselves, to see what you can do about those that are butting the house. Can you use other equipment on those holes?
There's no, there's no electric-powered equipment that will clean the debris off of those, those surfaces, given the large acreage. At this, at this point in time.
All right, so, I mean, at this, Chris, it sounds like we have, at least in the, in, this would be a commitment for the tees and greens, electric and clubhouse.
And around the clubhouse, yeah.
All right.
How did they do in 1915?
Before, before the advent of either gas or electric blowers, how did they manage fairways? I assume golf...
Back in 1915?
Golf antidates.
Maybe 25.
Yeah, golf antidates these blowers.
Goats, goats.
Otherwise, yeah, a lot of, ooh, goats.
Well, just technology over those, you know, over 100 years has grown so much that, you know, a green was being cut at a half an inch back in 1915. Now we're, we're, you know, sub .100 of an inch to mow the surfaces.
So I'm, I'm not a golfer. I was just talking about the fairways where you're now using gas-powered leaf blowers. But prior to the advent of gas-powered leaf blowers or electric leaf blowers, I assume somehow these fairways were cleared of leaves. I'm just curious as to how.
Yeah, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't speak on to that, but certainly the standards were much lower than they are today.
I'm not a golfer, but I just, I don't envision them wading through piles of leaves as they play golf.
No, yeah.
Are there, just as an aside, are there equipment conventions? Do you attend equipment conventions or anything like that?
Yes, absolutely. We have a couple of different conferences that we attend throughout the year, some more regional, and then we also have a national conference for Golf Course Superintendents Association of America. So we're constantly being good stewards of the environment and taking educational classes and seeing the latest and greatest technology, equipment, and products that are available to us.
I mean, firstly, I'm, I, you know, I think, I think, I, well, I certainly understand the necessity and I understand it's a different type of property than a lot that we're dealing with. You know, it's, I'm, to me, I'm very happy to hear the commitment for the tees and greens and the clubhouse. You know, I'm prepared to go with the one-year exemption on this. I don't know how everyone else feels.
Which is the way to cut some of the noise.
I know.
People cut back on the decibel level in some way. How, is there any way you can do that?
We can take that into consideration to, you know, on those particular holes, 2 and, 2 and 4 to reduce our throttle a little bit, but it will take longer, so the noise will last longer in those areas.
What would the decibel level flip to? What's the difference?
I don't have those numbers offhand.
You know, we had other people do that last meeting.
Yeah, that's not gonna, that doesn't really work on these things, though. I'm familiar with the tech, I'm familiar with the machines that they're using and certainly have seen them plenty. It's, it's tough. And hopefully the technology gets there. You know, I would, I think we would ask that, you know, keep moving forward with electric as much as you possibly can. You know, please try and keep our neighbors in, you know, your neighbors, our residents in mind.
That I'm most concerned with. Obviously, the Blind Brook is not a problem. The clubhouse, there's nobody that lives near that. That's all people that are staying there that are yours and the enclave has a greater buffer.
Yeah, enclave's at the end of the range.
People in Blind Country Ridge do not have a big buffer. 100 feet is not a big buffer when there's nothing there.
I can assure you that we have constant dialogue among my staff of trying to be as sensitive and careful with noise well prior to this leaf blower ban. I mean, even if we have a north wind that day, we really try and be careful because we know how sensitive and how noise carries. So I assure you that we are continuing our efforts.
I appreciate that.
And I would, I would add, just from my experience, and somewhere, I couldn't remember the year, but it was somewhere in the first, between 2000, 2010, we got some noise complaints on Country Ridge for the grass mowing. And Blind Brook, within short period of time, weeks, had all, on all those holes, had, had electric lawn mowers out there. So, you know, I have to say, they were very responsive in that instance and, you know, have continued to be on the electric, on the grass blower, on the grass going.
I appreciate that.
And Chris, just to add on that, too, I mean, I've sat down with a lot of the applicants and to be fair, they've done more than, than pretty much all of them that I've sat with, at least already, and what they've committed to do.
We appreciate that. Appreciate the efforts. There's many questions I want to ask, but they're not related to this. It's a reiner, right?
Yeah, yes.
All right, that's what I thought.
If you're saying you have a hard time finding, can you please give the board a commitment that should it be available, that you guys would be willing to switch?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. And I heard that the fifth green was changed.
All of them were changed, restored.
Restored.
They cut down a lot of...
I loved it when it was a postage stamp.
And then you reworked it and you cut down a lot of the trees also. So is that easier for you to maintain now?
We, we cut down some trees interior, but we also planted along Country Ridge Drive a lot of evergreen trees, spruce trees, cedar trees.
But I'm talking about is it better for you now with less deciduous trees?
It's still a lot of debris. There's still a lot of trees on property, so it's enough debris to keep us busy for sure.
Mayor, would you like me to read the conditions as I understand it?
Please.
Okay. The Board of Trustees hereby approves a one-year extension of the village code enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for the Blind Brook Golf Club and be it further resolved that the approval of the exemption includes the following conditions, and that's that the greens, tees, and around the clubhouse shall use electric leaf blowers during the seasonal leaf blower ban period. And all, and that's it, that's it.
That's one year?
Yes.
That's one year. And that one year shall go to September 30th of next year because after that, you can use it. So that then comes back, gives you time to come before May 1st of the following year, should you ask for another extension or request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion and second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes, Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Resolution number four, considering intermunicipal agreement between the Village of Rybrook and the Town of Eastchester for the purchase of a LL5 OBD SCL 800 tow behind leaf pack. I mean, how many letters?
I know. We know what it is. They don't have identifiers except for serial numbers and that's...
There we go, all right.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook has a tow behind leaf pack that is no longer operational value to the village operations. And whereas on November 28th, the Board of...
It's a pack, it's a pack. It sucks, it doesn't blow.
Yeah. And on November 28th, the Board of Trustees declared the leaf pack as surplus. And whereas the Town of Eastchester has expressed interest in purchasing the tow behind leaf pack from the village, and the Village of Rybrook has determined that there's a public benefit in selling this equipment to another municipality. And whereas legal counsel for the Village of Rybrook has drafted an agreement between the village and the Town of Eastchester for allow for the purchase of the leaf pack, may therefore be it resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the IMA, the purchase agreement between the Village of Rybrook and the Town of Eastchester for the purchase of the tow behind leaf pack from the Village of Rybrook, subject to modification by council. And be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a mayor, a motion and a second?
Second.
I second it.
Motion. I second it.
Thank you.
And I just want to make one modification, and that's just to include the cost in the resolution. I just don't see it listed there.
Gotcha.
5,600.
Yeah, it's in the amount of $5,600.
All right, was this the one that we put up as surplus last meeting?
What's that? Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions or comments?
Nope.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes, Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. I apologize, it's been a long day. All right. Resolution number five, considering an intermunicipal agreement between the Village of Rybrook and Westchester County for Westchester Records Online.
Hey, whereas Westchester County allows the Village of Rybrook staff to remote access to vital Westchester County records free of charge under the Westchester Records Online system. And whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to continue to have access to the Westchester Records Online system to help support the personnel and our village personnel and their day-to-day functions and to better serve the residents of Rybrook. And whereas under the proposed agreement, the Village of Rybrook will have continued access to that system to access important documents, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the IMA with Westchester County to continue granting the Village of Rybrook personnel with access to the records online system, subject to modification by council through December 31st, 2024. And be it further resolved, the mayor and the administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Could I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I think that's fairly self-explanatory.
Yeah, we use this, we use this system all the time.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, any questions or comments?
Nope, it sounds good. That's something we do every year, I guess, that's...
Yeah, it is. It is, and we all, we have access and where we get all our, huh?
Yeah, we've been having access.
Yes.
It's good.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six, considering reallocation and closing of capital project account in fiscal year 2324.
Now therefore be resolved that the following transfer between capital projects be approved, and that's a transfer from sanitary sewer improvements to relining manhole rehab work, a different project account in capital in the amount of $233,914.16. And be it further resolved that the, it's basically restated, there's an original budget, a modified budget reflecting that change. And be it further resolved, the capital project be closed and removed from the project length schedule. And that's the sanitary sewer improvement project.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Second.
Again, I think fairly self-explanatory. We thank Trish for all of the work she does on these, really keeping it, keeping our budget tight, which is good and makes it so the audit goes much quicker every year.
Much smoother, every year.
Which is, which is, which is good because the shorter, the shorter that presentation, the better.
And what it is, what this project is doing to us, it's transferring the balances from an older project that we completed work on and moves it forward into our continuing reinvestment into our sanitary sewers. So when we, you know, we do the inspections and then we go the follow-up and as required also, under our agreement, we save the sound, we then follow up section by section to do relining, manhole parjing, and Michael coordinates that with the various contractors working in the village.
Great. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments?
I'm just fascinated by the two words, manhole rehab. When I think about a hole, I don't immediately jump to, oh yeah, how can I rehab that hole?
David, you should...
I have to.
Trustee Heiser should watch a video that Michael has of them parjing manholes. It's a job nobody wants.
Can you send it to us?
Is it on Netflix?
It's a job nobody wants. Literally, somebody goes into the manhole and sprays concrete to redo the walls of the, of the manhole. So you're down in the pit spraying concrete in an enclosed space. It's, it's a horrible job.
Oh, I'm sure the PPE is crazy. Yeah. All right. All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
As long as I don't have to do it, yes.
Is it Trustee Marino? Yes, Mayor Klein.
On that note, yes. Resolution number seven, considering a 2324 budget transfer for a police department locker.
Whereas the village has a need to purchase an additional locker for the most recent police officer appointment, and whereas a transfer is needed to purchase the locker, now therefore be resolved that the village board approves the following budget transfer in the current fiscal year for the purpose of purchasing a new locker for the police department as a transfer from contingency to the police materials and supplies line in the amount of $2,835.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
We were very excited to appoint Officer Alexander to her role earlier today, and so we need to make sure that she has the resources available.
Yes.
To do her job properly.
Yes.
Yes, clearly this is needed.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes, Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number eight, considering authorizing submission of a grant application to the New York State Department of Transportation for the 2023 Transportation Alternatives Program and Department of Transportation for the 2023 Carbon Reduction Program and approval of local match contributions.
Lot of acronyms in this one, like most government programs, it says. a job nobody wants.
Have you sent it to us?
Is it on Netflix?
It's a job nobody wants. Literally, somebody goes into the manhole and sprays concrete to redo the walls of the, of the manhole. So you're down in the pit spraying concrete in an enclosed space. It's, it's a horrible job.
Oh, I'm sure the PPE is crazy. Yeah. All right. All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
As long as I don't have to do it, yes.
Is it Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
On that note, yes. Resolution number seven, considering a 23-24 budget transfer for a police department locker.
Whereas the village has a need to purchase an additional locker for the most recent police officer appointment, and whereas a transfer is needed to purchase the locker, now therefore be resolved that the village board approves the following budget transfer in the current fiscal year for the purpose of purchasing a new locker for the police department, as a transfer from contingency to the police materials and supplies line in the amount of $2,835.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
We were very excited to appoint Officer Alexander to her role earlier today, and so we need to make sure that she has the resources available...
Yes.
...to do her job properly.
Yes.
Yes. Clearly, this is needed.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number eight, considering authorizing submission of a grant application to the New York State Department of Transportation for the 2023 Transportation Alternatives Program and Department of Transportation for the 2023 Carbon Reduction Program, and approval of local match contributions.
Lot of acronyms in this one, like most government programs, it says. So the Village of Rybrook seeks to implement traffic calming measures and pedestrian safety improvements in our, within the downtown region, in basically a 1.1-mile area south of, south of North Ridge Street and Westchester Avenue, north of Garibaldi, east of the Portchester Middle School, and west of Bowman and Westchester Avenue intersection. And whereas the D, New York State DOT has a TAP grant, or Transportation Alternatives Program grant, which provides federal aid for projects related to surface transportation, safety, and mobility improvements, and whereas the DOT Carbon Reduction Program grants, uh, grant provides federal aid for projects related to carbon emission reduction via transportation, safety, and mobility improvements. And whereas the village has opted to submit one application to the TAP, for the TAP grant and the New York State DOT grant for the downtown Rybrook multimodal accessibility projects, which comes at a cost of $3.43,474,055. And whereas the New York State DOT TAP and CRP grant will fund up to 80% of the total project cost, and requires a local match of at least 20% of the total project cost. And whereas the Village of Rybrook is requesting a grant in the amount of 2 point, basically 2.8 million just underneath that, and is committing to funding the remaining 694,811, which is the 20% share through local funds. Now therefore be resolved that the governing body of the Village of Rybrook has authorized the submission of this application, has approved the required local match, and be it further resolved, the administrator is authorized to execute the grant agreement and signature of the village administrator continues acceptance of the terms and conditions of the grant agreement, and approves the execution, execution of the grant agreement.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
We are very hopeful that we can get this grant. Maybe, Chris, you can describe a little bit how it relates to the comprehensive plan?
Sure. Yeah, this is a very big project. It's a very competitive grant. We've submitted grants for this project in the past. We've had meetings then with the follow-up, with follow-up with the grant, right, with the grant, review teams that gives us suggestions on how the grant could be improved, the application could be strengthened, because it is very competitive. So what this is, is strictly going straight along with our comprehensive plan recommendations to make certain improvements in the, what we think of as our downtown area. It would make it much more pedestrian-friendly, where, you know, adding sidewalks on the Ridge Street side where there's very little space, on the Ridge Street, sorry, the Ry Ridge Shopping Center side where there's very little space. That involves retaining walls and some, uh, also on the rest of the, make it a little more of a walkable downtown area where you would have to, you know, right now, we talked about in the comprehensive plan, having the sidewalks right on the street. So it would kind of create a buffer there, where the sidewalks would be pushed back with more tree-lined streets along the way. We've talked about branding and some, also some, uh, Westchester and Bowman, making that into more of a smart signal, like we have at, sorry, Westchester and Ridge, making that into more of a smart signal like it is over at Bowman and Ridge. So there's a whole list of improvements to, it's a big project, it's a lofty project, but it's one that would change the, our, what we call our downtown, consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and as Chris mentioned, this is a very competitive grant. So, and I'm assuming, Chris, if it were to be awarded, we would probably ban that amount?
Yes. Yeah, 100%. Yep.
So is this something that, uh, it's given out to one municipality, or?
No, it's more, I think it's, uh, five, something like that. I forget how many there were in New York.
Five in New York State.
Yeah, I believe it's something like that.
Not a lot of money?
I don't, I can't answer that.
Wow.
It's, this is a, this is a project budget that we had to create. We got a, we asked CalGEE Construction to create a project budget based on the comp plan, which is difficult to do, because it's really more of a, you know, huh? It's not specific, it's not like we have design plans yet. So they, they created that no charge, and we were able to get a project budget through that, and, and come up with a project. So if the board wants to continue to implement those recommendations of the comp plan, this is a way to do it, with 80% funded somewhere else.
That's great.
Can we make the decision?
Uh, New York State DOT and New York State, um, it's all New York State DOT. And anybody else?
You probably have a selection committee.
Yeah, there's a group, there's a review committee who we've met with representatives after the last time we submitted, to make improvements.
Have they had any input from our past applications that we could...
Yeah, that's why we tightened up the budget. We created more specific work. We added more material into it. Um, yeah, we got, we had a lot more detail. It's much, it's a more refined application now.
Great. Nice job.
Well, it's, fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed.
Is our grant company helping us with this?
They're the ones who write, who write the grant.
Got it.
With our coordination. Even when we interviewed the review team, they were part of that interview process.
And have we ever received any grant in the past for something, this amount of money? Uh, this would be the first time...
We haven't received it yet, no.
No, if we received it.
We have received, well...
I should say.
We've received commitments for larger grants. We have a commitment from the county.
Well, we got a $28 million project right now for, uh, for the Brook Lane one. That's, that's the biggest one I know of.
Oh, good. Okay, well, that's for the, yeah.
That's the biggest. But, uh, no, we got 2.8 from the county for the ball fields way back when.
Oh, good. That's good. So we're good, all right.
With the turf, we've done pretty well with...
Done pretty well, okay. Great.
Can our elected officials help us in any way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they're aware of it. They're aware of our requests and...
Good.
Yeah.
So Portchester School Board and...
So they become aware of it. And a lot of that is to help, like, we, we went out there and took pictures of the, the flow of the pedestrians, particularly at school drop, uh, let-out areas.
Yeah, that's important.
And that was shown, that was meant to put in the application. So we show, you know, that it has to be stopped, doesn't always stop, and the kids, and we showed the volume of the kids that...
Kids, that's good.
...that cross that intersection and the peak value. So that's the kind of stuff we...
Whatever we can do to make it safer is better.
It's all stuff we've enhanced the application with more information.
That's good. That's gotta work.
Is it video or just photos?
Photos. I took the photos.
Okay. It is a, never go there at 3:00 PM.
That's, and that's the point, you know. And there's, to be fair, it's not just the amount of the kids, it's also the capacity of the sidewalk that's there on one side. Yeah.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Good.
After my thing, I'll go through Wind Ridge and go up the stairs.
Right. So, yeah, hopefully we can get the grant. Do we have a motion and second on this?
Motion.
Okay. We already, we already did.
All right.
Any other questions or comments? I mean, it's...
No, I think it's great.
You know, it's, it's hopeful, you know, there's not that same, you know, that we're gonna get it, but hopeful, hopefully we can.
Well, you won't get it if you don't apply.
Yes.
No, you won't. And, and, you know, certainly, you know, this is, in my opinion, absolutely worth applying village funds to if we were to be awarded this grant.
It would transform the look and feel of, of the area in a lot of ways.
Absolutely.
Can the school be part of it, the Portchester School?
Well, they do, like, let us support, things like that, but...
Do you want men to apply for a grant as well?
I don't know.
I don't know if they qualify, because they don't own the roads.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some of the improvements, they've, we've looked at the things like flow, because some of it, they flow over to, the kids will flow some of them to Westchester Avenue rather than Bowman.
Right.
And the school still does own that one vacant lot on Ridge Street halfway down. If you see on Ridge Street, there used to be a, a crossing, right, for, to leave the school, and to leave and go onto Ridge Street there, but that's since been all blocked off, and it's just property owned by the school district.
Right.
Really?
Yeah. Right. I don't know the reason why. I mean, that predates my time, right, chief?
The kids used to walk up that path and then go to the university, and then go right towards, you know, Bowman Avenue or left towards Westchester Avenue. And the sidewalk that's on Bowman Avenue now was never there. There was never a sidewalk on Bowman Avenue. So when the village had gotten the grant to put the sidewalk on Bowman Avenue, the party agreement was to close up that section. We used to have a school guard at that sidewalk also to help the kids.
That's right.
You know, and consequently, that sidewalk was a situation we have now. It was never a problem until that sidewalk was put in place.
Interesting.
And the kids walking up to school and going to, and going into the, into the shopping center, and all the kids going to Bowman and, uh, and Ridge Street to make that crossing, where the kids used to be split up and go differently.
So is there any way to ask them to reopen it?
We talked to them before about that. They put, they put a guard in there in the past, and they don't really seem to be willing to do that. There's things that the school should do, staggering dismissal times and arrival times, you know, to help with the traffic, but they're not really willing to, to do that.
Hmm. The, the request seems like a no-brainer. I don't understand that.
Well, the thought process was it was safer to have the kids walk up the sidewalk on Bowman Avenue, and the sidewalk...
Where the traffic light was.
For everyone who was involved. So there was no sidewalk there at all. You know, people walk on the street. But having the kids walk up Bowman Avenue, having the entire dismissal go up Bowman Avenue just...
That's what I'm saying. Having an alternate would be useful.
Yeah. No one anticipated that problem. It was, that that would be, that would be an alternate.
Well, maybe this project will give a sidewalk on that side all the way down to Westchester Avenue.
And the, the important part is that when, when the, the sidewalk alleviated that concern, and so it's a better situation now than it had been.
It's very clogged. It's a very narrow sidewalk.
Okay.
Just something else to mention, too. We also put in for the New York Forward Grant, which is very similar. So it's just another, other avenues. New York Forward Grant, it's a other grant we put in that's very similar to this one for their comprehensive plan. So it's just another avenue for us to try to get this comprehensive plan work done.
Whatever we can do. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Nope.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?